All right, this city council regular meeting agenda for Monday, July the 10th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. We'll call to order. If you'll all join me by standing, we're gonna have an invocation led by Councilmember Hernandez, followed by Mayor Pro Tim Coza, leading in our flag, pledges to our flags. Thanks.
You would please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you very much for yet another wonderful day. It's a little hot outside, but you know, if it wasn't hot, it wouldn't remind me that I hate the cold so much. So, thank you for that reminder. I wanted to say a special thank you for the beautiful service that you provided for Mayor Reed. I was not here at the meeting immediately preceding his service, but it really meant a lot to me that I felt you there and I felt your hand over Mayor Reed, his family and everyone in attendance. And so, pleased to be with us tonight as we continue Mayor Reed's legacy, continue the work to build a fantastic, very special city. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you for that, both, leading out in that. As we move forward in our agenda, we'll do roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify we have a quorum present as all members are present, with the exception of Councilmember Patel. Councilmember Patel is, I believe, out of town and won't be present the remainder of the evening. With that, we'll turn to citizens' comments. Did we have any citizens' comments come through? None? All right, first time in a while. All right. So, moving forward in our agenda to consent agenda. Member Carbone, if you could present consent agenda items A through Q, with the exception of B, C, D, M, N, and Q. And before you do that, that was the list that I had preceding. Did we miss anything? Didn't see any. All right.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through Q, with the exception of B, C, D, M, N, Q. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, moving to new business, item number one. Mr. Cam Carr, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, sir. Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 1619-2. So moved.
Second. We have a motion of second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This is the second reading of the budget amendment number two ordinance, which includes the projections and adjustments on revenues and expenditures for the remainder of fiscal year '23. At our last regular meeting, we went through the details on the general fund, the enterprise fund, and the special funds. That, at the first reading, budget amendment number two passed unanimously, which would normally place it on the consent agenda. However, we have one change that's been added to the second reading on the enterprise fund, and it's actually a decrease in expenditures by $541,000. There was an inadvertent duplication of some salaries for one of the divisions in the utilities divisions. And when we were separating out engineering and public works from the newly formed utilities department that just got overlooked the first go around. So, we have decreased those expenditures and will carry that forward. So, that's end of our report, Mayor.
Very good, very good. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
With that, moving to item number two. Mayor Pro Tim, would you present it, please?
Yes, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2023, des 161. So moved.
We have a motion of second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an engineering design services contract for the reconstruction, or the design for the reconstruction of Industrial Drive West. It includes 2,900 feet of two-lane concrete curb and gutter roadway, 12-inch waterline, the storm sewer system, and the stormwater detention associated with the project. It also includes the survey geotechnical engineering work and the environmental work. This is one of the projects funded by the EDC, Pearland Economic Development Corporation, and it supports the focused infrastructure recapitalization projects that were recently discussed and reviewed by both the PDC Board and the city council. So, with that, we're recommending authorizing the PDC expenditures for a design contract with Cobb, Finley, and Associates for $541,839.
All right, thank you for that. Turn it over to council. Questions, comments, concerns? Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. At what point do we know kind of what a general cross-section is gonna look like in terms of the lanes and turning lanes and all that?
So, I think we've already probably got our cross-section established. I don't know exactly what it is, but maybe someone from EDC, Valerie, can fill us in on what the actual cross-section is.
Sure. I'm Valerie Marvin with Pearland Economic Development Corporation. We've already completed some preliminary engineering with Cobb, Finley, and they've already identified a cross-section that's similar to what you might recognize on Rice Dryer or Hallock Road. It'll be a little bit wider, two-lane road, about a 37-foot pavement, curb-to-curb.
What's there now? Not much, but do you know the width now?
About 21, maybe?
Maybe, maybe. I know, it's narrow. Okay, that gives you a visual, too, so.
And I know we got quite a few industrial users. Do we have a plan to reach out to them as the project moves on?
Yes, absolutely. So, as we get so far along through design is when we start reaching out to the property owners. For example, on Hallock and Rice Dryer, we held a, like a public meeting where we invite all the owners along the project area to come together, ask questions.
Thank you.
Good deal. Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, as far as when this gets redone from a two-lane asphalt to the concrete curb and gutter, is it tied in to drainage? The reason I ask, I have personal experience with a two-lane asphalt road going to a four-lane concrete curb and gutter. For about eight months, we had no tie-in to the ditch at the railroad tracks, and we got flooded twice in that eight-month period.
We'll certainly take that into account, because we will have an outfall that will go into a city ditch that's along the railroad. Our design engineer is in attendance today, so I'm sure we'll make note of that in.
If it's the same ditch that runs along, you won't deal with the city, you'll deal with the railroad company. And they're very difficult to deal with.
Thank you.
They just take forever to deal with.
Jeff?
I know that Brask has a project coming up. Have y'all, I know y'all are working on that, and you have any idea on that timeline? Is it gonna overlap with the reconstruction of industrial at that time?
That's a good question. We're still talking to them, but they've made no definitive timeframe of when their project's gonna start.
Okay, so we're, yeah, okay. So, I'd assume we would just kind of get our plan and go, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I was gonna say Matt from EDC. So, a lot of times it's Lawrence, and I can't see him, so he's like, I'm back here. This side of the dais couldn't see you talking. All right, last call, questions, comments. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, moving forward in our agenda, Mr. Hernandez, would you present item three, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2023-94. So moved.
Second. We have a motion of second. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This contract is for the construction management and construction inspection services on the Bailey Road project, and that's the segment of Bailey Road between Maine and Veterans, including the overpass over the railroad. What this contract provides is a construction manager to oversee the construction, the contractor, as well as schedule the construction material testing, to hold all the construction meetings, as well as review all the daily reports, complete the daily reports, and then the pay applications as well. It also provides onsite construction inspectors to make sure that all the works being done in accordance with the specifications of the project. So, this is actually our last contract to get in place, so that construction can move forward. So, we'll start to see the contractor mobilize here very shortly. The contracts with the Girion Fields, they were selected through our qualification-based selection process and determined to be the most qualified firm for this particular project, and therefore, we're recommending approval of the construction management and inspection contract with the Girion Fields in the amount of $1.66 million plus a little change.
Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Very good. We'll move to matters removed from consent agenda. So, let me get back there. Ms. Kate, would you present item B, please? I know we'll have some questions on B and C together, but present B, we'll vote on them separately.
Consideration and possible action. Consent agenda, consent agenda item B. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Member Kate, I think you pulled this.
I did. B and C together, just because I had, I had some questions, literally because I don't know. The expectations for council members' attendance to meetings, Darren, I guess this is for you. What does the charter say? What are our expectations? Is there a legal?
Well, the charter does require that when a council member is absent from a regular meeting, that it be placed on the agenda for council's consideration on whether or not to excuse the absence. And it's addressed only in the charter, in that it basically indicates that if a council member misses or has two unexcused absences within a six-month period, then their position on council would be vacated and the council's actually forced to vacate that position. Now, that's what the charter says. That would require the council to have a, if there's a motion to excuse the absence of a council member, then the council would have to make a determination that it's not excused and vote no. What is the standard for that? That is determined purely by the city council. It's the council who sets that standard. There's nothing, as far as written requirements, not in the council rules. It's just, it has to go to council for it, or vote on whether or not to excuse it.
What is it? What defines excuse versus unexcused? I mean, I mean, we all have other things going on, right?
What defines it is when the council votes to excuse it.
No, I mean, like, what would, oh, I see.
What I'm saying is, y'all would have to weigh the facts of any given case to determine whether or not the council would excuse an absence. And if the council votes no to excuse, then it's an unexcused absence. If the council votes yes, then it's an excused absence.
Any other questions, comments on B? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
See, you mentioned it's not in council rules. Is that something that should be, could be? Do we need to have a future discussion on that?
I think it would be better to have, if the council wanted to address that through the rules, it'd be better to do it through a discussion. That way, it can provide some guidance on how to, what the council's looking for as a standard for, you know, absences and, I guess, expectations with respect to attendance.
We could also include expectations on notifying who to notify if you're gonna be, if you're gonna miss a meeting, stuff like that.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate that we have a discussion about it. I think it's appropriate to talk about expectations and what do we expect of ourselves and what should voters and constituents expect as well. And it may go beyond what just charter requirements are, and that would be, without changing the charter, in our rules and policies is where that would go. So, I think that would be appropriate to kind of have those discussions as well, so. But I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to discuss among ourselves what our expectations are. Any other questions, comments on item B? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
With that, Member Barry, would you present item C, please?
Yes, Mayor. Item C, consideration of possible action, consent agenda, item C. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Ms. Kate, you pulled this as well. Did you have additional comments?
No, these just kind of went together. I wanted to, I really wanted to know the specifics and if it should be more specific, basically.
Got you. All right, any other questions, comments? Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As far as my just general curiosity, I guess, as far as courtesy to council, kind of obligations to our constituents, you had made a comment, some to the fact that Adrian reached out to you and Alex had not. Alex, did you reach out to anyone else or comment or mention anybody here?
We've, I've reached out to one of the staff members. I may not have, but I recalled that I, I believe I did. I've reached out when I couldn't make it to this meeting, and I emailed, I texted Trent. I worked very hard through Delta today, three connecting flights to be here, which was a lot of fun. But, you know, when I think that I'm going to miss, I try to notify. There are times when maybe that lapses, but, you know, the past about month, I've been up north visiting family. My mother-in-law, one of her brothers is very sick, so I'm supporting my wife. She's visiting that person subsequently, end up passing away. So, God rest their soul, but that's just kind of where I've been.
Okay, sorry to hear that. It's just, as far as, I was curious. I know in my own personal experience, as far as being able to notify people, it helps in knowing what we're looking at. If a case popped up where we didn't have quorum and you, you know, would be it, it'd be kind of embarrassing to council, you know, not to be able to call the meeting.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, I just, just, yeah, I hadn't heard of anyone. I questioned staff, anybody got an email or a text two weeks ago. I know I hadn't, I know I'd gotten a text from you the night before about our lunch, but it was, I thought it was in context of the lunch and not the meeting, and so. So, it was just, it's just, that's the reason why some of the questions, because, and I think family matters happen. I mean, I just, my expectation level is, we do take vacations and it happens. You're, we all have other jobs and there's work-related issues that happen that's unavoidable. In fact, Member Patel, I'm kind of reluctant to say too much, and that's the other thing. I don't want to announce where some people are for obvious reasons, but he has a, he has a family deal that was planned many months even before he was elected. So, I don't expect all those things to be put on hold, but do like to have some communication whether or not we're gonna be in the chambers and president or not. And we do know things happen at the last minute, and you're kind of caught up in the moment that happens as well. But it's something to let us know, so. But I think it would be good to have some form of framework to talk about. Doesn't necessarily have, I don't want anything super formal, thou shall do this, but I think there needs to be some expectation level of the inner workings of council, along with staff. If we are absent, you know, what happens? And, 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 you know, what, I don't even think we should define what's excused versus not, because it's really, I think, on a case-by-case basis, was, it gets determined. So, anyway, that's what I've got on that tonight, because the way it looked, just on the outside, you know, looking in, is kind of a no-call, no-show, and that's not good in any business when you have a no-call, no-show. And so, we need to have that kind of communication, just to let us know, you know, what's going on. So, with that, any other questions, comments on item C? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to item D. Mr. Carbone, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R2023-115. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Staff report before we go to Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for reappointing directors to the Pearland Municipal Management District, number one. The city council appoints the voting directors from persons that are actually recommended by the district's board of directors. There are three positions set to expire June 1st of 2023. I guess they did expire. And PMMD's board has recommended the reappointment of the existing three members. That would be Mike Rozell, Aaron Garcia, and Herb Fane.
Okay, with that, Member Hernandez, you pulled this, so you probably have a question or a comment?
Yes, Mayor, this is related, I guess, more broadly to these appointments. It was previously asked with a former member of council, myself, that we try to provide some information on some of these appointees, resumes, attendance lists, things like that. It is, has there been any progress in that respect to try to get information like that from these other boards that we have this oversight?
PMMD one doesn't meet often.
I'll hand that off to Matt. He's more directly involved with these boards.
PMMD two, we've done that, and I believe in Laura Kirby, we've done it, but PMMD one, we have not, but we can have them fill out applications also. Obviously, this is, there's only one landowner in this district, so, you know, there's not a lot of opportunities. It's whoever the landowner wants to submit, and you can accept or reject who they submit. But, yeah, we can ask this district in the future for applications, but we just haven't. And they've all been the same people on this board for, I think there's only been one turnover in this board in the 10 years I've been here, 13 years I've been here.
And I can respect that. More broadly, though, I think it just kind of helps. I just don't like voting blindly on these types of things, not knowing who these individuals are. I know that we put a certain level of trust in, you know, these other boards and commissions making these recommendations, but it would at least be nice to know the people that we are appear voting for to serve on these boards. That's all, Mayor.
Good deal. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Kate?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to item M. Mr.? Yes. I pulled it. Okay, you pulled it. Yeah, Mr. Cam Carr, would you present item M, please?
All right, thank you. Consideration and possible action, R2023-159. So moved.
Second. We have a motion of second. Staff report, and then we'll come to Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second of two Pearland Economic Development Corporation landscaping maintenance contracts that were on tonight's agenda. This one includes the State Highway 35 from Broadway to Beltway 8 and the Pearland Parkway areas. It includes mowing, weeding, pruning, hardscape maintenance, fertilizing, chemical applications, trash removal, and irrigation maintenance for those segments of roadway and the monuments as well. This is the final renewal, and it was approved by the EDC Board on June 29th. So, we're recommending authorizing renewal to Silver Sands Services in the amount of $342,541.41. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Barry, would you pull this?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you very much. Trent, thank you for your information. And I want to recognize that M and N are very closely related, but I just pulled M for that purpose, for expediency. So, I guess my concern is, as we, as we go down this path of maintaining our entryways in the city of Pearland, and I think these, this particular item has, you know, 35, Cullen, Pearland Parkway, Dixie Farm, you know, all the various, all the various entryways. Some of them are just monuments and whatnot, but others have more extensive work that's done, like Highway 35 and a little, and Pearland Parkway, and even Cullen, I think, in the past, they've expanded their reach in that project. So, I guess, I guess my concern is, is that it's getting quite, quite expensive to contract these projects out, and, you know, $500,000 to manage our entryways, and I don't want to make that sound trivial, but, you know, in some areas, it is extensive, because we deal with irrigation, we deal with pumps on Pearland Parkway and things of that sort. But at the, at the end of the day, a half million dollars or more is pretty extensive when it comes to managing those entryways. So, what I would like to understand is if, if we could take a look at a couple of different items and verse, rather than, you know, I know Matt's team doesn't necessarily have the bandwidth to manage anything like this, but what I would like to consider is potentially seeing if it would be more financially suitable to maybe add them, add these entryways onto the city contract to see, and then EDC reimburse the city for those entryways. And I think, Trent, you know, I discussed this briefly earlier today, and you think that maybe EDC has a little bit more of a robust requirement when it comes to the maintenance of those entryways?
So, I've been able to have a couple of conversations since then, and, and the, I think the scopes are very similar with our current contract. I think the big difference is the intensity of the shrubbery and other things that require more pruning and maintenance at the monuments and the areas that EDC has upgraded the landscaping versus most of our right-of-ways, which is extensive mowing for long stretches. And so, I think while the scope of the actual work is similar, it's just more intense on these particular contracts because of the, because of the monuments and what's around the monuments.
Yeah, and then secondly, maybe we could consider Parks, Carrie's team, adding a few people to that team and having them maintain, maintain the monument areas and the roadways or whatnot. And then in those months that they're not actually mowing and maintaining those areas, they can help and assist Carrie in her endeavors and Parks and whatnot. So, we kind of double-dip in that area, too. So, would that be something that we could, those two items, would that be something we can consider?
I think, you know, if there's a desire of council, we can look at, you know, what the options are and what the cost and the benefits are, and if that's got some added benefits of. benefits of, you know, being able to fund those crews to maintain the things that the EDC is maintaining, and then have some benefits of, of those folks also being able to do other things for us, we can look at that as well. You know, we're evaluating kind of a similar situation on some of the neighborhood parks that we've contracted out, and whether or not that's the best way to handle those, so we could, if, if the council wants to take a look at analyzing those two different things, I think what I'd ask is that we renew this for the next year and allow us some time to, to get through that and, and look at that maybe in next year's budget cycle, since we're already well into this year's budget cycle and putting things together.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
But I don't, that's where I am, I mean, I defer to the.
Quick question, I don't know if it's Matt, or Valerie, do you manage this as well, or either one? I'm kind of familiar with like HOA-type maintenance, you know, there are landscape contracts, landscape maintenance. How many, I call it mows a year, typically in a, in an HOA type of thing, you've got about 42 mows a year, because you'll get into the dormant months where you just don't have to mow the grass, but you still, and really nothing's growing, so you do a little bit of pruning and trimming, but you'd have the mulching and you have some of the other stuff. How, how is that equivalent here? How many, quote, mows a year are, are these contracts associated?
Actually, very similarly. Our current contract is 42 mows, and we do have a schedule that throughout the year, we have more mowings occurring during the summer, less frequent during the winter, during the non-growing season, except for when it's warm.
And, and I can say, and, and again, I think to your point, you know, we've had, we've, we've looked at it in-house, we've looked at it, you know, contract, kind of gone back and forth, that pendulum does this, and I think it's probably in our best interest to look at that on some kind of a rotating five or six or seven-year cycle, where we do take a look at it, making sure that it's, it's the right, you know, way to go about, you know, doing it, because it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's dollars, and we need to make sure that we're spending them the correct way. When I look at this cost, you know, they're in 42,000, I know, right before I got off my HOA, and we're in a small HOA, very small, we have around our lake and around the landscaping outside, nowhere near this much, and we were paying upwards of 60,000 or something. So when I put it on the scale of here, this is scaled up and is probably a, a, a better price than even, we got, we're much, we're much smaller, so.
Yeah.
Smaller the area, the smaller the, you know, your, your, your cost effectiveness isn't there, so we're, we're gaining something. To your point, putting that into a bigger contract with the city, there, there may be some cost savings down the road.
Remember, this is a third year of this contract, so we are seeing, you know, original bid prices from about, you know, two years ago. Similar on our, our larger contract for the city, we've got to rebid that this year. We're expecting we'll see significant increases.
Trent, in this particular case, don't we have a, isn't this a situation where we lost one of our contractors and we're redirecting funds, or?
So, yes, when, when these contracts were originally bid, we awarded to three different contractors. One of those wasn't meeting the requirements of the contract, and so we ended that contract and then moved the areas they were responsible for over to, I believe, this contract. So we've got two contracts now.
So we have two, but we had three, and what was that total value?
Similar to what the value is here, I mean, we just moved that over to this contract, and I don't think the dollars would have moved a whole lot, so similar amount even when we were under three.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passes five to one.
All right, with that, we'll move to item N. Mr. Coza, would you present that, please?
Certainly, Mayor, consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2023-162, so moved.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a construction contract for the expansion of the Argovitz Detention Pond, which is the pond off of Smith Ranch Road, just north of J.C. Penney's. So I'm gonna kind of take a step back and walk through why we're doing this work, and then, and then come back to, to the recommended contract. So in December 2021, the city entered into a development agreement with, with Buc-E's. They own the land to the north of this, and working with EDC and them, the EDC is, is going to build some public infrastructure as part of that development agreement. And what, what is going to be built is this Argovitz Detention Pond expansion, and that's gonna have detention capacity in it for the Buc-E site, and the road that, that the EDC will eventually be responsible for constructing if a certain development occurs on, on the, on the, the Buc-E site. So the other, the other commitment for infrastructure is the east-west road between Smith Ranch Road and the State Highway 288 frontage road, that's really the extension of Wooton Road as we made that modification on our thoroughfare plan. And so the public infrastructure doing these things was in exchange for the Smith Ranch Road right-of-way, and then the right-of-way for that east west road, the Wooton Road right-of-way, and then Buc-E's also provided the land for the expansion of this detention pond. So all in all, we were able to acquire all the right-of-way we needed for these two thoroughfare projects, without any actual outlay of expenditures in exchange for the infrastructure that, that the EDC is, is going to build. So this is the contract to actually do that pond expansion, they've already provided all the right-of-way through the plating process, and so we're recommending award to DC Contracting Services in the amount of $319,640. Thank you.
And this is actually constructing?
Expanding that detention pond, and, and it's our responsibility, our commitment under the, the, the development agreement.
Okay. Cam Carr?
Thank you for all this.
Thanks, sir. I just wanted to compliment the EDC. When I first got here, it seemed like there was a whole lot going on in that corridor besides the, the retail closer to Broadway, and now it seems to be inching its way up, and I'm always in favor of drainage improvements, as many people here know, but it's, it's good to see the activity starting to ramp up, and I'm hoping that this will eventually pay off with a lot of good things in the area. But you can't have commercial or homes or businesses until you can move stormwater, and this is what this does. It's great, thank you.
Good deal. I also want to make a comment, I know from time to time, there's been comments about our EDC that they're not paying out enough, maybe enough in, in incentives. Sometimes incentives don't have to be cash payouts, but this is an incentive sometimes, and I've, and I've asked Matt, let's make sure that we capture the development agreements that we have to perform under, because that is incentive, because if we don't do it, they're not coming, it's the incentive to get here. So I think this is part of that, you know, incentive to get, to get Buc-E's and their headquarters and everything else to finalize here and, and, and construct it. They're already here, they're just leasing space, now we want them to own their space, so. All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Mayor Protim Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, back around to Mr. Hernandez, would you place item Q on the table?
As soon as my iPad decides. Where? You said Q, right? Yeah, okay, got it. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2023-151, so moved.
We have a motion of second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. When we were reconstructing the roadway and, roadways in Sleepy Hollow this past year, as part of that project, we discovered there was a drainage outfall that had collapsed and the actual outfall to Clear Creek was damaged and needed to basically be rebuilt, wasn't part of the original scope, but knowing that we needed to make sure that the, the drainage and everything outfall properly, we had the engineer do it, that did the road project, go ahead and complete the design on that, and we've now, we looked at change ordering it in, decided it was better to go bid this out as a separate project, so now that's been bid out. And so the recommendation here is to award that construction contract to Tandem Services in the amount of $423,019. Thank you, Mayor.
Good deal. Cam Carr, I think you pulled this.
I'm asking a lot more compliments than I used to. Just want to compliment the team, you solve a problem, trying to address it, doing it timely. Drainage is obviously a key priority, and especially when it affects neighbors, people with homes, homesteads, it's really encouraging to see how fast we've moved on that. I just want to give compliments to the team for working on that so quickly.
All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Cade.
Aye.
Member Barry.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Coza.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr. Motion passes six to zero.
All right, with that, we'll move to other business, there is none. Mayor Council issues for council discussion, there is none, we'll move to adjournment at 7:10.